Roll call, Mayor Brock.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like all of you to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are a couple changes to the agenda. Wasn't there under...
Yes, under Action Item, there will be an Action Item C. Lisa Grant in that for workout equipment.
Item C. Yep. Is there others?
No, the minutes were supplied.
Oh, yes.
That would be it.
Under the consent agenda, the minutes, there was a couple corrections that we made ahead of time and made those change before and redistributed to you this evening. So, are there any other items on the agenda to add or delete? Hearing non, could we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. First is the consideration of the items on the consent agenda, which included obviously the approval of the agenda, which I... We already did. The minutes for the study session and regular meeting of July 24th and for the study session of August 7th. And the consideration of a resolution to September 2017 to be observed this National Recovery Month in the City of Lathir Village. And number five is the consideration of a resolution of support for the Southfield Road environmental assessment, preferred alternative. That was... Resolution was passed out to the council this evening, though it was discussed at length that the study session last two weeks ago. So, that's the reason we placed it under the consent agenda at this point. Is there any of the items on the consent agenda that any council member wants to have removed and put as standalone items on the agenda? If not, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next item would be the dispersment reports. If I can get down to it here. Sorry, I'll take it out for you. As per usual, we have two of those reports. We have one for the period of July 1st through July 15th, in amounts totaling $51,788.64. And the second is for the July of 60th through the 31st of 2017, in amounts totaling $426,066.57. Behind those and the materials you received was the detail of behind these reports. Are there any questions or comments on the dispersment reports this evening? Could we have a motion to approve those reports?
I make a motion to approve the reports.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is the consideration, approval, acceptance of the departmental reports, which begins somewhere around page 30, isn't it? As a matter of fact, I think that's exactly where they're going. Take it down. Yes. What's happening? What's happening? Whack. It's okay.
Nope, that's right.
Includes the building department, it includes the police department's reports that we have received, reports from Parks and Recreation Director. He's sitting there grading white light. This is... Minutes from the Planning Commission. So I believe that's it. Yep. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So are there any questions or comments on any of those reports? If not, could we have a motion to accept those reports?
I had a question on the update on the 11 Mile Lathir Boulevard project. The building official is following up on this project. Is the building official...
On what was the...
On page 40.
Forty.
The building official is following up on that project. And when we say building official, are we talking about Jim? Who we... Who's the building official?
Jim Wright is our building official.
Okay, so he's gonna follow up. So that's just saying he's gonna give us a report. He's following up on the project. That was just...
There were specific... You referring to the Planning Commission minutes?
I am.
There were specific inquiry as to whether or not they had... Where they were in progress with their site plan.
Mm-hmm.
If they haven't made... If their site plan expires and they haven't taken action under that site plan, it expires.
That was what Jim Wright was going to inquire as to where they were. Previously, the developer had indicated DTE was the cause of the delays of that project.
This is the proposed condo development over here.
Right, right, right.
Correct. Our understanding is that work has now subsequently been done by DTE, if there still hasn't been any progress by the developer. So, that's a... The question that was presented that Jim was going to follow up with was the status of that project, where they were going as far as their site plan is concerned and... The next steps. If their site plan expires, they haven't done any more work, they haven't completed any of the work on their parcel, there was a performance bond that was posted and required that they be post or that they post. That's something that Jim Wright could then take that bond and have some remediation worked on on that property, because the condition it's in right now, it certainly can't be left like that. There's mounds of gravel and dirt and just stuff in that. That area would have to be cleaned up and returned back as close as possible. Obviously, you couldn't plant all the trees back that they took down, but would have to be returned back as close as possible to what it was before.
Turned deer back into...
Yeah. Throw some grass.
So he'll know... We'll know more about this next month then, after he takes a look at it, right?
Yeah, I would expect that he would probably report back to the Planning Commission. They're the ones that requested the information and then he would also give an update to the council.
And then Jim is gonna do a walkthrough on every commercial building? Is that what I'm reading here? Before September 1st?
Has been in progress. He's been doing some... He did run into, I know he ran into a slight issue with a lot of the inspections. He was going under the guise of a fire inspection and that was not one of the services that Southfield Fire had agreed to provide the city as inspection services. So, he was pulling some other avenues to get into these properties to do these inspections. So, that's been something that's been ongoing for the last couple of months and...
See, that's a pretty heavy... But I'm really glad that he's doing it, but that's a pretty heavy undertaking for one person, so... And then the new lighting ordinance, the letters went out to all the...
Yes.
I'm assuming that's those Christmas lights or whatever lights that are...
Right.
Perimeter lighting, yeah. That...
The ones that are henceforth forbidden.
Yeah. They were given... The business owners were given a timetable to take those down. Don't know... We should be rapidly approaching that deadline.
Have we seen those lights off the buildings yet? I haven't.
That's all I want to come up, so...
Yeah, that's an enforcement issue. Once that deadline is passed, Jim will start writing tickets for those that haven't removed that lighting.
You don't know that yet? Do you know the deadline? Happen to know it?
I don't, no. I don't actually have a copy of the letter he sent out.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. The light that went up, wasn't that businessperson informed?
Should've been. Again, I don't know which light went up, but that's something that the code officer...
Yeah.
If it's a new business that has... An existing business that has placed new lights.
Yeah.
After the enforcement date, they are not going to be getting a letter or grandfathering them to take the lights down, so that should be an enforcement.
Okay.
That should just be the law, yeah. The law, okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Is there a motion then to accept the departmental reports?
Thank you.
So moved.
Will you second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. At this point, have we reached the point on the agenda where we invite people who wish to discuss or speak to the council on subjects that are not necessarily on the agenda? This is your opportunity. I've been informed of one special, very special, important guest we have with us who has asked for an opportunity to speak, and I see her hiding behind our director of Parks and Recreation. Kimmy Horn, the world famous Kimmy Horn. Yay! Yes, you have to go to the podium.
Yeah, thank you very much.
State your name and address for the record, because we want to make sure we know who you are.
Okay. My name is Kimmy Horn. I am an international jazz performer and recording artist. My address is 18187 Avila Boulevard.
All right.
I am here today, I am as Mayor Brock Jr., if I can attend the council meeting today to basically really just thank everyone for such a warm welcome, for so many different concert goers from all around the area. I mean, we had people coming in from out of town, from Chicago, with family reunions coming and first time ever even hearing of Lathir Village, and now they know about Lathir Village. So, I just wanted to come and thank you because the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival was a huge success, and it could not have been a huge success without the support of all of you here today. Since I debuted the Jazz Festival last year to a one-day event, it has grown into a two-day boutique extravaganza. It really is. I mean, in the quaint village of Lathir Village, it is really uniquely ours, and down to, you know, the white picket fences, I mean, the vision of walking through those, any of those entrances and seeing that picket fence with the staging, with the tents, I mean, it really, really gave you a real warm villagey feel. So, you know, that mission was definitely accomplished. I want to thank, first of all, Mayor Brock Jr. Thank you, because without your voice, you know, and your support, yes.
I deliberately didn't say.
I was looking for you too. But with, you know, with your voice of support, that really paved the way to really everything just kind of working together. So, I really, really appreciate that partnership. Next in line, I'd like to thank Pamela. Pamela, you have been there since 2016, since I debuted, and there was a transition going on, and I'll never forget, from early morning to late night. We opened and we closed that festival down to putting up chairs, putting up tables. I mean, we got some muscles that night, didn't we? And so I thank you for your unwavering support and helping to really keep all of the records straight. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Kimmy.
Next, I'd like to thank Trina, Trina Vanderhoff. Boy, did you roll up your sleeves, did she? She was out there every day. I thought she was gonna get tired of me. I was like on food truck Friday. I was riding through on every day, just to make sure...
I won't tell you what she was saying.
Yeah, just to make sure that we were on the same page, and she was right there from ground one, helping to plan and lay out the format of the Jazz Festival, which was... Had a very nice flow throughout the whole park, Annie Lathir Park. So, thank you so much, Trina. I'd like to take the time to thank the Police Department. Chief Scott, under your direction, I mean, it was... Your presence was felt. It was very warm. You know, I'm even still getting texts and emails about how Lathir Village is such a family-oriented place. You know, with the police, they even noticed that some of the police officers were ushering some of our elders to the front gate to be able to come in, and they was like, "Who does that?" I was like, "Lathir Village." So, thank you. Thank you for all of your support. And then I just... I just have a few more minutes. I know there's probably like a time thing.
No problem. Take your time.
But, oh, I want to thank the...
We can listen to you all night.
You know, I really want to thank too the residents of Lathir Village, you know, because that's a lot to ask. I mean, the festival went until 10 o'clock. From what I understand, I mean, after I talked to people two days, you know, following the festival, there was no complaints in terms of noise, I think in terms of parking. You know, thank you for being so patient with a lot of the festival goers that came in and neatly lined the streets as they parked, you know, so I don't think we had any major issues with, you know, parking in terms of nothing that caused us strenuous... I mean, is that correct, Chief Scott? That's good. That's great. So, thank you for Lathir Village residents, that your support. And then, last, oh, and of course, the... I have to thank the sponsors. With Varsity Lincoln as my signature sponsor, they helped to really set the stage, if you will. My dream came true. It was a highlight for me in terms of my musical career. I got the campers that I wanted. Some of you didn't know, but I camped right out on grounds from Thursday through Sunday. I was right in the back of Annie Lathir in my camper, and it was so wonderful. Wake up in the morning, and even after the festival, there was not a lot of trash, you know, there was not a lot of, you know, drama. People even left their lawn chairs to be able to come back the next day and have a place to sit. So, you know, I'm just so grateful to Varsity Lincoln for them being the signature sponsoring and help to make my stage my dream stage. It was just amazing. I mean, billboards, I don't know if you noticed the billboards that were around town from Wixom, Michigan to Milford to Detroit, Michigan. They really helped promote this along with all of the TV stations and whatnot. Thank you to the council. Thank you to the council for you guys being supportive, and the ones that were there, you witnessed how magical of an event it really was. You know, I truly... I think the festival is bigger than I am, is bigger than we are, because I'm still getting texts and emails from people that are testifying about how it was a law fest, you know, about how it was just so warm and they just couldn't believe how everybody was so friendly, and the artist was amazing. So, you know, thank you again to Lathir Village, because you guys, you know, didn't have to roll out the red carpet, but you did, and I thank you for that. And then, lastly, I'm gonna close out with just saying, you know, again, to the staff that's in the office, Yvette, Ken, Erin, even Cliff, Cliff, even Julian. I mean, everyone helped immensely. I woke up one morning, it's like, "Who is that guy out there in the Kimmy Horn shirt at 6:00 in the morning picking up trash?" And it was Julian. I mean, when I walked out there to help him, he was like, "I'm doing a good job, Kimmy." I said, "Yes, you are. Oh, my gosh." So, thank you, thank you, and thank you. And we even have another Lathir resident right here, the DJ Vernon English that came today. Thank you so much, because he helped to make sure that, again, we had a constant musical flow that flowed right through here for two days, and with our guest emcees, Glenda Lewis of Channel 7 and Evrod and Don Allen, they are still ranting and raving about how this festival really was. I don't know if you noticed the helicopters that were flying over. So, just know that Lathir Village is on the map. We streamed internationally to Japan, Australia, and they're talking about Lathir Village. So, thank you. Adagado.
Thank you, Kimmy.
Thank you.
I wanted to say, Ms. Horn, it was something I wanted to say, because it just blessed me. I said, "I should've told her this," but I'm gonna say it now. And it's kind of heartwarming for me, because while all of that hate was going on in Virginia, at the same time, you brought so many of us together, communities together. It was a global movement right here in Lathir Village, and it really helped, when I thought about it later, that while that was going on, we had a love thing going on. So, it's a vision, it's a mission, and we thank you for it.
And I hope to do it again next year. I forgot to even... I brought this back up here. I'm not stealing the time, but this is what the whole meaning...
I told you, we could listen to you all day.
I wanted to present this to the City of Lathir Village in what is since Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival 2017. Certificate of Appreciation is hereby granted to the City of Lathir Village, multi-year host for outstanding support and lasting contribution with Kimmy Horn Jazz. Woo! You want to keep that on your mind.
I just want to say a couple things. One is to thank Kimmy for starting this festival here in Lathir Village. She approached us in 2016 and said, "I'd like to do this. It's a dream of mine, a vision of ours that she's had for a long time to do." And, of course, she lives in our midst. We love her for it, and... But it was something new for you to do as well as for us, so we appreciate your patience in teaching us how to do this. But when that first year was over, that one-day event, she was lobbied to take this event elsewhere, by the way. She could've gone to a, I won't say who, our neighbor, who really would've loved to have had her. If you remember, Southfield used to do a Jazz Festival on their big front lawn in front of their city hall, and they had it for several years in combination with a Jazz station. I can't remember the call letters of that station now, but, you know, and I think you struck a note with that, reintroducing that concept, bringing it back here, and instead, she says, "I'd like to do this two days in Lathir Village instead of the one." And I'm delighted that we all saw the results. The event, the Friday night event was just amazing.
It was.
I never saw so many food trucks in one place when I went. And it kind of, Chris, it played off of our... We've been doing food truck Fridays, but this was special. I never saw... There was a mammoth number of people here, and I wish Saturday night would've been an absolute identical repeat. It wasn't quite, but we did have a great crowd also on the Saturday.
It was awesome.
And, again, we thank you for doing it here, and I can thank... I'll pledge on behalf of the council that we want to help you continue doing it here.
Three days.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, my sentiments, my sentiments, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, someone asked her at the tent, "Are you gonna do it next year?" She was like, "Ah." I said, "Yes." She's gonna do it next year, so.
I just want to add a couple words. So, you know, when we used to watch you on Wednesdays, and the crowd would just fill up, because they knew you were coming in on Wednesdays for the music in the park, and the demographic that you had in the park was big, and it's still, we were still talking about it. And you basically multiplied that by five on Friday, and you still multiplied it by three on Saturday. So, I was there for both days. And I have to tell you, the demographics from, you know, working class to executives to professionals, even a couple of my state trooper buddies were disguised, you know, civvies, they were like, you know, they planned their whole week weekend around your festival. And they had some individuals that lived in Lathir, planned family events right on California, so they were actually having parties, listening to you and coming over. So, I'm really grateful that it's growing. I really am.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimmy. You don't have to stay for the rest. But on the other hand, if you wish to, we'd love to have it.
As long as Maria doesn't ask.
Moving on on our agenda then, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening? Devin, if you give your... The podium, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Solinsky, 27835 Lathir Boulevard. I didn't have a concert, so it's a tough act to find. I was here a couple of months or so ago, and I had a couple of issues that I brought to the council's attention. One was the stalled project on the corner of Lathir and the Service Drive, and I guess you've talked about it, although I have to say that when I was here last, Sean sort of addressed it, and he pretty much said the same thing that the city attorney has said, so it doesn't sound like there's really a whole lot going on there. It's really a seriously stalled, so if someone could really get on this and take a look at why they're not doing anything and get over this, it would be appreciated. We also talked about replacing the fencing that's on the overpass of 696 along Southfield. It's kind of institutionalized looking.
Which is it for? I'm sorry, say it again.
The overpass on Southfield. I just talked to Sean, and he has contacted a couple people that could do something for a certain amount of money with broad iron fencing, make it look more attractive, have a big plaque that's facing the freeway that says Lathir Village, City of Lathir Village on it. Be kind of fancy, like, I think Wixom has the same thing over 96 when you're heading on 96.
Yeah, there's also, I think, is it Rochester?
Auburn Hills.
Auburn Hills got a big one over I-75, and I think that would be a nice one too.
Right. And the people they talked to, they weren't opposed to it.
No, no. The principal feedback we got back from MDOT, because it's an MDOT project, is that we need to get the design and, you know, price that out, and they would need to know about it probably yet this year for scheduling for next year.
Right.
It's the type of thing they would want to include in their schedule of work that needed to be done. So, that's something we have to finish following up on.
Okay. Also, some upgraded traffic signals at 12 Mile in Southfield. They don't allow for right-hand turns, and they're kind of dated traffic signals. I don't know if anybody got with the county and City of Southfield and us to try to work on that, so we can get some better traffic signals at that corner. It's a really very busy corner.
Scott?
And lastly, the barbecue repair at the...
We're working on that.
Picnic Shelter, it's still not done?
Nope, they're working on that. They're getting quotes. They have to have three quotes for that.
We're getting pricing on that, yes. That's... That has been instructed, somebody's been instructed to get those prices and get them.
All right.
Scott had something to say about, didn't you, about the...
Signals?
Yeah, so we contacted Oakland County Road Commission about the signals at 12 in Southfield. They indicated they have to do a traffic study before they'd be going to...
Of course they do.
Any type of environmental...
And an environmental assessment.
Traffic study done, I think Southfield did that in 2012. I think it was probably, yeah, the same year Walmart tried to dump in between our cities, but that was done, and if... I think Southfield has a copy of that.
No?
I don't think Oakland County did it.
Okay.
I think that was done as a part of the project when it was being proposed, because there was traffic study... Because there was traffic studies done at the time. You're absolutely right. And the main reason for those studies was to try and, on behalf of Walmart, make sure they made the case that it wasn't going to paralyze that corner. And in the case of those who were opposed, we wanted proof that it was going to make it a mess. So, it was, I don't think it was a study aimed at necessarily figuring out of whether right-hand turns will work here or not. So, have you formally asked them to do that?
We have contacted and requested that to be done. So, I can follow up with them.
If you would mind doing that and report back to us. Thank you.
The traffic to the east at Evergreen and 12 Mile is the same traffic that crosses there. The traffic to the north at 13 and Southfield is the same traffic. And the traffic to the east at Evergreen Field and 12 Mile, they all have upgraded traffic signals.
Yes, all those were done as a part of construction projects that were going to happen there.
Yeah, I agree with you because the Green Field and 12 Mile light, the traffic went down when they upgraded the turn signal. It's actually, it's more electronic. It's not just, you know, timed, right? So, it's receiving a signal and then it's actually, you know, calculating how many cars are there. So, they actually have a longer light.
Okay, we'll follow up on that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Bruce Cantor, 18129 Sunnybrook. And I won't embarrass myself this time by letting you know that that's in Latherton Village, like I did last time.
We appreciate those assurances, though.
Yeah. But like I said last time, since I'm running for city council, I wanted to, and I'm coming to the meetings, I wanted to bring up issues that I have. But before I do that, I want to thank Kenny Horn as well because that was awesome. We had a good time going there. It was great.
We saw you there.
Yeah, so.
I saw you.
Yeah. So, okay, so I just have a few minor issues that I wanted to bring up. The first one has to do with a former road project that was, I don't know if it was a road project, but a former project that was done on Eldorado Place just before you get to Bloomfield, about 20 feet before Bloomfield. About a year ago, they cut a swath of about three feet across the road, and they did something underneath it, and then they patched it. And I thought that patch was temporary, given the way that, how badly it was done. But now that it's a little over a year later, I'm convinced now that that's permanent. But it was done really poorly. If you, and I've got some pictures here that I can pass out. You guys are close.
Do you have copies of that?
I just have...
Did you save?
I just had that with me. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I actually do have copies of that. Yeah, I'm a photographer, so I save all my pictures.
All right.
But basically, what's happened is that patch has sunk down. So, it's down about two to three inches, and there's a really hard edge on both sides. I'm a cyclist, so I can tell you it's not pleasant going over that. And then on one side, it's crumbling, and in the middle, there's a pothole. So, I don't know if our city workers did that or if we contracted out. But if we contracted out, I mean, we should be going back to whoever did it and making them repair it the right way. So, that was one issue. Another minor issue, but equally is annoying. When you exit the highway on, off of 696 coming eastbound off the exit, and you hit that immediate turnaround, there's an orange traffic barrel that's been there for three years. And it's covering up a pothole. And so, obviously, somebody knew it was there. They knew to put the orange barrel there, but nobody's done anything about it. So, I don't know if that's...
Where is it again?
When you, when you exit west, eastbound off the freeway.
It's a turnaround.
It's an immediate, you go into the left turnaround instead of going straight to Southfield Road.
There's a turnaround right before that first light? That's actually not a pothole. That's a problem with that bridge.
It's a drain.
That's overpass. There is a hole right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta be, it's a major...
Yeah, but it's been there for three years. So, I mean, I don't know if we can exert some pressure on whomever, you know, whether it's the city, the state...
Is that MDOT? Is that an MDOT?
I've got a couple of bags of pea gravel in my garage.
That would be an MDOT issue, I believe.
Yeah, and every now and then some...
And MDOT did come out and do some repairs on some of those areas. I know I saw their trucks there a couple of months ago.
Oh, that's my next picture.
And they did not, obviously, pay any attention to this one.
Right. And I've seen at times that, I've actually moved that barrel back once before because the cars had hit it, and it ends up in the middle of the lane. So, that's another one. The other thing I wanted to bring up has to do with signage. They're doing, again, I don't know if it's Oakland County or the state. They're putting up new signs, and they just put one up. So, if you're going westbound, as if you're gonna get on the highway, they put up a new sign showing east to the west, 696. And underneath it, they left a bowling ball-sized mess of concrete. And I went to try to clean it up, but it's stuck to the ground. So, whoever installed that, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a shitty ornament. It should be taken care of. And then the last question I have about signage is how mu... Oops, Kimmy.
It looks like a large pile of...
Concrete elephant poop?
Yeah, it was like concrete elephant poop. That's what it looks like. It's big.
Jurassic Park.
With regard to the signs, they're also putting up more signs on Southfield Road. So, the question I have is, how much is enough? I mean, we have so many signs there. They just, at my house, or I live on Sunnybrook, and if you stand about 100 yards from the Service Drive, there are 11 signs that you see between, you know, that area. And, you know, it's overload for the cars, let alone it just looks ugly. They just put up a new, "Bridge Ices Before Road." And I can't imagine that that bridge ices any quicker than, you know, the rest of the road is equally as open. So, they just added that sign. They added another sign, which actually is probably kind of necessary to show us that the right lane is returning right and the next most right lane is going straight, which we all know that's a problem. But there's 11 signs in there. You can't see some of them because they're behind the trees. But, you know, it's, I know they recently put up some hospital signs. So, it just, every time you look, there's more signs there, and it just looks awful. And I don't know how functional it is because when you reach a point of having so many signs, people just don't see them.
You have to stop to read them. You're supposed to be driving.
Because you're going too fast to see them, so.
Traffic calming.
Yeah.
Bruce, they're gonna put up a sign saying danger, too many signs.
Would it be okay if I keep these pictures to show to the right people? Okay, thank you. I'll make sure I get them to the right person.
Anyone else wish to be heard on any items not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on then to item number nine on the agenda. There are no advertised hearings for this evening. The item 9A, the various request for the address on 12 Mile Road. No additional information has been received from that applicant, so we will leave this item table until our next meeting. Moving on to actual requests, we have for your, for council's consideration, an independent contractor contract with... Say the name.
Tatiana.
Tatiana. For the dance program.
Yes.
Got a drum roll or anything?
Music. This is just a contract for the Russian Ballet Company. I was looking at contracts for them as long, or with One Life Fitness, and neither of them have updated contracts. So, this is just a way to update Russian Ballet Company's contract. In the past, they have done a 75-25. We get 25% of what they bring in. They keep 75%. And since I've been here, all the checks are supposed to come into city hall, and then we write them a check. But they have been churning in the checks to us, so I'm not really for sure if that's really 75-25, just because they're getting them. So, what I'm proposing is a flat $1,000 fee every month. What this is, is it gives us a 5% increase of the average of the last two years of what we have brought in. They currently are using 48% of the studio downstairs of the time that we're open, which is a lot of time. And that's, I think, every day but Tuesday they're here.
How much time?
48%. So, it's a lot when we could be running other programs. So, I ran it past them, and they said $1,000 is fair. So, they're just waiting to get this passed, and we can start.
So, they are in agreement with this proposal?
They are, yeah. It's just, it's a hassle to do it the 75-25 the way we do it now because I have to create a spreadsheet with all the checks, check numbers, and then put all the check numbers in, where if we just get one check, there's less metalwork.
What's the timeframe on, what timeframe are they...
We're starting on September 9, and they do...
Through June 30 of 2018.
And I did it till June 30, just because our new fiscal year will start, and then we'll get back on track with fiscal year.
Okay, and they're using the...
The dance studio downstairs.
In the morning, right from...
Oh, it's all times of the day. Sometimes they're here for an hour. No, it's set. They give me a schedule each session. And sometimes their classes run, sometimes they don't. So, it's, it's a lot of work sometimes trying to figure out if they're gonna be there or not. So.
I think that's fair, yeah.
I had a...
Yeah. Well, I was just gonna say, there's, you know, there's a lot of contractual language in here that I would feel more comfortable having our city attorney review.
What was that?
There, you know, because Donna just, you know, pointed out something that I don't know if this is standard language in a contract like this. And I'd like Scott to take a look at it.
This is the one that we've used in the past. I changed the date. So, it may have been just pulled off the internet. I don't know. It's the one my predecessor used, so.
Yeah.
There was a little, I don't know. I just asked the attorneys because of something in the insurance.
The indemnification hold harmless clause is standard language, but quite frankly...
It kind of looks backwards.
It kind, yeah.
They should be holding a city...
It's on page... 14. The middle, the middle paragraph. I'm not attorney. It didn't sound right to me.
The insurance indemnification clause?
That's right.
Scott's not saying anything tonight.
I just want us to...
No, he did. He said that. He said it's backwards.
Okay.
So, that means that we're not dispending Scott's approval?
I would say, I might suggest a motion to approve with the city attorney review and making a final review and making the appropriate legal changes to the contract. Could that be my suggestion? Well, okay.
That's fine, as long as, as long as he looks at it and it protects Latherton Village.
He's already said that one clause is backwards, so...
Yeah, I didn't have an opportunity to review it before it came to council, so.
I second your emotion.
I'll take a look at it. I know it's the one that we've used for several years, but I don't know the source of it originally.
Yes, you do.
I suggest the emotion.
Well, I make the motion that the mayor suggested that we approve it with...
I have a question before we do the motion, though. So, you're saying that they're here 48% of the time? And then I just heard you say, damn, it's up to here on Sunday. Who's opening the doors for them on Sunday?
Cliff's usually here.
So, we're paying Cliff on top of that for him to be here, for them to open?
No, that's his regular. He's working parties usually when he's here on Sundays.
So, there's no parties going on?
Then he's here.
So, then back to, we are paying him for opening the doors for...
Well, there's no parties, yes.
Did you add extra $200?
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Maybe that's...
What?
Isn't that part of his contract we have with him?
I don't know. I didn't read his contract.
I think it is.
I think it is.
I'm not sure.
I would just be curious in how much, you know, we're actually paying out for someone to be here to open the doors. So, they're here in the evenings also after the offices are closed.
Oh, yeah, till like 9:45 on Wednesdays.
And how fast they jump on that $1,000? Exactly. So, I think before we even, I mean, this is my thoughts, do some more investigation with that because if they're here after hours and we have to pay somebody to be here, even though it might be in his contract, but I think it needs to be investigated just a little bit more because we might be kind of...
And the fact that, I don't know, being, I don't know, running programs for Latherton Village, I don't think there's one person, maybe two, that actually is part of this dance company. They all come from Troy and other outside. So, I guess if, I'd be okay with $1,000 if it was more Latherton Village people. But it's, they're here because they got kicked out of their last place.
I would be okay with it if it made money for us, if it was...
That's why I'm changing it up because that's 75-25.
What you said is that the program needs to be more resident-based.
I would like them to tailor it for...
So, can anybody sign up for this?
Or...
Yes.
But I'm just wondering. Okay, so my thoughts is that that needs to be investigated before we agree on anything regarding the $1,000 contract.
So, when their new session starts on September 9, are we on hold until then?
When's our next meeting? I mean, we have a, do we do anything in the study session or no? It's a study session.
Yes, you can have a special meeting. We just, we'd have to post it ahead of time for the Sunday night.
For what, September to what?
This one was run till June 30.
Oh, so, so it's a full cycle, four-year. Okay.
So, this is an increase over the average that they have been paying us.
Mm-hmm. Some might, some months, we only make like 400 off them. And then there's some months that we don't make...
From just the program, we still don't know if we're paying Cliff whatever amount of money to be here. So, we might not be actually making any money, right? We don't know that.
Is Cliff the only one, does the, is the police department sometimes involved with letting them out as well? Or is Cliff primarily here, six to nine? And so, the question is, is it a part of his contract? Because I'm sure that once we, is it a part of what we pay him? I think it might be.
I think it is.
I think it might be because, so it may not even be an issue. So, but I do think we should...
I agree.
Check it out.
When's our next scheduled meeting?
So, you want to make a motion to table this item until...
11th is the study session.
Yeah, is that, is that, it's coming up.
The 25th will probably be...
Do they pay months by month on their...
They do.
Because there's no previous place.
Right.
So, you could continue the status quo for another month.
Continue the 75-25 until it's good.
Contract that would take effect October 1st.
Yeah. And then it gives you a month to look it over.
Won't they also lobby for more space?
Yes. This is how this all came about. They rent the studio. And when I created the new fitness center downstairs, moved all the cardio to the large room downstairs, they were using it for stretching. And we found out real quickly how upset they were because they use the whole basement for every class for stretching. So, then they took three, four-year-olds upstairs to the meeting place and had them stretch for a half an hour. So, this is...
Did we tell them they couldn't do that?
We did, and it's been, I think they get it now.
See, that's something else they can go on the contract, right, that this is your space.
And there it says that they get, and they were disrupting people that rented, had the building rented. They weren't letting them use the restrooms because their girls were changing. So, this has a lot of wordage about, they get the studio, they aren't to talk to other guests.
So, you're just gonna continue on?
Yeah, we'll continue 75-25 until the next council meeting.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, do we need a formal motion that says that?
Well, you need a motion to table it.
Need a motion to table this contract would continue with the present arrangement till that next meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
So, we're moving seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. The motion carries. Next. It is, the next item is the chief police position, which has been a tabled item. And we are on a timeframe that interviews and so on will be taking place near future. So, that one will remain tabled until our next meeting. And then item C, which is, again...
Serena?
I can give you an update if you want.
So, this is the...
I'm waiting. A police chief's called.
Agreement for the cardio equipment that was purchased or being purchased. And, no, it's not numbered. Exhibit B. It's about six pages in.
And what size is this font, two?
Exhibit B, it's a, it's a minus...
I made a comment about that as well.
It's a minus font.
Yeah, I tried to read it.
So Pam sent in all the necessary financial paperwork to, um, the National Equipment Leasing Company Corporation. And the grand total is sixteen thousand nineteen dollars. So we're looking at, um, there's four, it would be one year, one payment per year, um, of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents for the first three years, and the final payment would be two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six and eighty-seven cents. So we're looking at that we would save eighteen hundred dollars if we paid it all off in one lump sum of the sixteen thousand nineteen.
Pay all four years with the salary or something?
Yeah, so with this lease agreement, how it works is every, every four years, we get new equipment. If it breaks down, they come fix it, um, if it's broken, like, they've already been out here once, they had to change a battery pack of some sort. If we get a lemon, they replace it, um, it's a really good company to work for, to deal with, so, um... I was told to come talk to you about it, I don't know, Pam signed it over.
Well...
Police wants to make a motion?
I, I don't know.
Yes, yes, because it's over sixteen thousand.
The reason is, is that it exceeds the contract for four years, and the amount, aggregate amount exceeds the amount that's required for the administration just to...
Right.
Approve it without council approval, because the total cost here is sixteen, just over sixteen thousand dollars, so that's the reason it had, come here this evening. What you've done so far is exactly what you discussed with council months ago.
Okay, good.
It's the direction we intended to go, and we express support for that, so that's not, I don't think we're into any big debate about, about that. It's just a matter, the cost of the contract is such that it requires this body to consider it first.
And this is for four years, the sixteen thousand minus the eighteen hundred if we pay it?
Correct.
Okay, so, um...
But...
You're really going to fourteen too?
No, 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 sixteen is the grand total, yeah, sorry.
Oh, is the discount, okay. Okay, so that's four years. So we need a vote?
We need a motion.
A motion?
To either approve or, you know.
I'll make a motion, you have something else you want to do.
Just, just a quick question, so, um, any damages covered for the life of this contract? You can call them anytime and they'll replace, or if, if, um, if the equipment has malfunction or whatever?
If it malfunctions, yes, but if we are negligent and...
She says she has a separate insurance.
Damage it, just like a lease of a car, if you smash your leased car, you are gonna pay for what's not covered.
So how do you classify that, like, if it's being used and it gets damaged, it's not covered, or is it...
If the treadmill wears out, if the belt wears out, if the engine wears down, they cover that.
Right. Right.
But if we drop a fifty-pound plate and smash the motherboard, it doesn't work, that's on us.
Yeah, like the bell door, yeah. That makes sense, okay.
So they have a regular schedule that they come and tune up everything?
Yes, yearly, and then whatever we need.
Okay, but whenever we need it, okay.
Well, this is really small print, and so I don't know if I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah, it's tough.
Are we obligated to keep an insurance policy on the equipment?
The city is under this contract that's been presented, like, the city's required to provide insurance on this, and they are also required to keep the equipment in good repair and maintenance, which I did ask Trina, and she indicated there is a separate maintenance agreement. My only recommendation would be that maintenance agreement be incorporated into this document as one of the exhibits, just like the other, um, payment schedule, the description of the equipment, just to have that in there, because this contract does state that, that that's the city's responsibility to maintain that. So if there is, and since it's an agreement with the same company, that, that maintenance agreement should be made part of this.
And that'll make, it'll make the go up, make the contract price go up if we get to...
No, that sounds like that's something that has already been negotiated, is service included, right?
Yeah, it's tied in.
It's just not, it's just not actually in this contract, so that agreement should...
So that agreement needs to be incorporated into this item.
And the obligation for separate insurance that is listed in here, is there also going to be an additional cost for additional insurance that we need to, to purchase?
It'll be, be covered under our coverage with the liability and property tools.
We should have, we should have, we should have, it should, because I don't know for certain, but there, the city has a...
We will, we will, we'll have to officially add them to the list of...
Yeah, they would be an additional named insurer, their equipment would be protected, just like the city has insurance on its, the copy machines that they lease and any other equipment. That equipment is just added to the policy, and this fitness equipment should also be added to that.
And, and, and will there then be an increased cost to the insurance policy for adding this equipment?
You'd have to contact your insurance adjuster.
I am gonna be talking to our insurance adjuster tomorrow, she's bringing us our rates, all right.
All right.
And the maintenance on fitness equipments, what they expect us to do is keep them clean. Like, if you don't clean them for a year and the belt goes bad, they're gonna look at us like, well, you're not taking care of them. That's the maintenance they're talking about, not getting your screwdriver out and tightening things up, that's what they're doing for a year, or for the life of them.
So since all the equipment is leased, is it brand new, you get it brand new, or is it already...
Brand new, you haven't been down there yet?
I'm too busy writing this.
That's why I suggested, that's why I suggested to you that in our next study meeting or something like that, the council will be invited to pick a tour.
I think we should have study sessions down there, there's enough equipment for everybody.
I was riding my bike around the Kimmy Horn concert, what's going on?
So Trina, what are the hours for the fitness center?
Um, right now, there, as the building is open, um, right now, I do have a survey monkey out there.
Yep, I saw, I participated in it.
And I would like to, there's a lot of talk about doing early morning to after like eight o'clock for the working people. One of the questions is, do you know that Lether Village has a fitness center? And I've gotten more responses of no, and the next question is, would you use it, and they said yes, so, um, I think if we really promote it and make it nice, um, right now it's fifty dollars, dollars a year, um, it's a steal.
Yeah, I agree.
I pay seventy a month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Kimmy, you can come and give us some voice lessons.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I wanna make a suggestion, so, you know, we haven't really utilized our, um, music in the park when it comes to announcements, and this should be one of them. Because I, we get so many people there, you know, just come out for the music and the food, and then it's like they're gone, so I think we should do that.
Why don't we have an open house, why don't we have something official?
Working on it. Cause I wanna get it.
And announce it, um, yeah.
I wanna get it a hundred percent, I'm still waiting for a few things, so, once I get everything.
Yeah. I mean, we have one more left, but...
Yeah.
It's tough, I know it's tough, but...
So that would be great, all right.
It'll definitely be in your town, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's what I mean, we all want it.
So Mr. City Attorney, you have a suggestion motion on, I would incorporate that other items in there.
Corresponding purchase option price listed on exit, there's no...
Yeah, I know, what Trina's asking is that there's, there is a provision in there that allows for the city to purchase the equipment outright at the end of the lease, and there's no incorporated purchase price, which is referenced that it's supposed to be, but that's not something that, the city is just re, this is going to be replacing this equipment.
Yeah, we don't wanna purchase it because, I just like leasing a new car, we'll get brand, the newest, latest, greatest, after it's done.
Well, I'm just wondering what that, what that purchase price would be.
I, I would agree, you don't wanna lease it, I mean, you don't wanna purchase it at the end.
Well, this doesn't say at the end, it just says about thirty days is written notice.
Oh.
We can say, you know, we love this stuff, we wanna buy it, um, I've gotten sentimentally attached to it, um, you know, but, you know, but so it references something that's not...
I would advise you to get a life.
Yeah, so, but I mean, it's just, it, it references something that's just not in here.
Yeah, I think it would depend on what year we decide we wanna do that, not just like a car, like if we do it next year, it'd be less.
Well, presumably to give you a price, you don't like it, you just say the thanks.
So what is our suggested motion?
Motion would be to approve the lease agreement for the work, the fitness equipment, authorize the interim city administrator to sign on behalf of the city with the noted change that that maintenance agreement be incorporated into this.
So move.
Agreement.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator, do you have any thing you wish to add, report?
Hi, the only thing I have to report is Kelly was asking about a, an update on the timeline for the police chief position. I have contacted my police, um, my board for the interviews, the board, um, they will be calling me back, um, trying to set up interviews for next week. Hopefully, everything goes well, and they will be able to all meet on one day, and we will have, we have five candidates that we will be interviewing for the police chief position. And by the September meeting, I will have an appointment at that time.
Do you have any holdups?
Holdups, that what you said?
Holdup.
Holdup.
We have some delays, but it's okay.
I'm moving forward.
Any, anything else, Pam?
Nope, that's it, I'm all set.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have any updates?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Is there any unfinished or new business that any member of the council wishes to bring up?
Yes, um, on Sunday, we had the Lether Village Summer Stroll, and I wanna personally thank Trina, she's been everywhere, she likes music, just like me. So we had the Lether Village Summer Stroll, yesterday we had roughly ten houses, and we had a lot of representation from Lether Village. For those of you who don't know, we usually have music or dancing either in front of houses, designated houses, or behind the house, or in the backyard, and we had a lot of turnout, a lot of participation, and we had, we just had a great time. So that was the fifth annual, we're going to number six, and we're trying our best to kinda incorporate more of Lether Village. Over the last five years, we've had it on California Southeast and also a portion of Lether Boulevard, and when I meet with the Time Bank, and by the way, thank you Time Bank, thank you Adam Laurie for organizing the music portion of it, and just the Time Bank members in general, they really stepped up and made it a really good event. So next year, hopefully, we can meet with them and try to figure out how we can make it more, you know, more creative, so we're going to the sixth year, and, you know, Katrina and I, we talked about improving and trying to incorporate some really good ideas, and you've got some great ideas. Yes, yes, so we're, we're trying to do the next step, because we've got competition, we've got Kimmy Horn's Jazz Festival, and it's like, wow, there's so much music in Lether, people have no idea. So many musicians just quietly keeping the music going.
And DJs.
Yeah, and DJs, people incorporated with music, so, again, thank you, Lether Village, for making it great, I mean, just keep the music going, that's all I'm asking. And we wanna see more council members there, too.
I was there.
I know you were.
Oh.
Yes, council member is going to have it at, um, at a home next year, I'm gonna do something on this special.
All right, okay.
Get my Uncle Charles boasts.
What?
Sitting there, I'm gonna do it, so.
Are there any other items from other members of the council?
I do, I want to invite everybody tomorrow to the coffee hour, Judge Nance is gonna be here, it's called Here Comes the Judge, so we're bringing the courts to, uh, Lether Village, and so I hope that you can come out and just support it, and please spread the word, she's going to talk about the courts, and also, um, it's gonna be fun, it'd be, we'll have some coffee and some, some little music, just so that we can come together. And also on September sixteenth is shred day, the shred truck will be here, and I just want everybody to get their papers, everything, old credit cards, everything ready, and it's open to all communities to, it'll be here between two and six o'clock. And I had to fight to get that truck here this time, so I hope that we really, really support it, and, uh, but please come out tomorrow night, six to seven thirty, coffee hour, our meet and greet, the council will be there.
Will you have tea?
I'll have tea, might have some ice cream.
All right.
Ice cream, I will be there for sure.
Kimmy, do you, um, is there a limit?
No, you mean for the shred truck? Bring it all, bring it all, bring it all, September sixteenth.
Is it hazard displaced too?
I'm sorry?
With the shredder? No, it's not.
Is there any others?
What was your question?
Is it gonna be up with, uh, even with the hazard displaced?
No.
No, 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 but that's, I could, I could probably work on that. Okay, you're welcome.
Just, one, one last thing, and I apologize, um, so, uh, the Children's Garden Group, um, they have been with, through me requesting a voice from, from council to kinda discuss going forward.
Discuss what?
A, uh, budget.
Oh, right.
Children's Garden.
They gave us a budget.
They did, but we need to, we need to, we need to either put it on the agenda or figure out when we're gonna...
Actually, we were supposed to have it for, um, it was supposed to come up, um, during the budget talks, so absolutely.
So Pam can put it on our agenda for next time?
Can you please?
It looks absolutely gorgeous out there.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, they've done a nice job.
Really, really does, and if you'd like to come by.
Pass this up to Pam.
Yes.
Just saying.
They've done a beautiful job, I appreciate it. Any other items this evening, hearing none? I would have to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, so move. Second.
Second.
Moved to second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries, this meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody for coming.